So I'd love to learn from you. However you'd like to use it, the handout. I was quoting the opening lines of the Declaration of Independence seventy seventy six. You know, reading it about four years ago with fresh eyes in this context, and I was stunned when I read it. Because if you read it, if we read it, and really what I want to do is just open up for, I hope everyone has an extra copy here. Because I was, I was in the middle of imposing the Declaration of Interdependence, which is on the backside. And I, I didn't want to see, we don't need another declaration. We want to live up to the Declaration, and there's our founding, our scripture, which was this seventy seventy six. And so what comes out on the other side, I'm trying to show, is a direct continuation of the same mental space of the founding voices. And when I read this, I'll just go over it, and then maybe later on, after our conversation, you can read the other side, which I suggest is where we have to go, the Declaration of Interdependence that follows. If you, if, if the principle of separation is to let go of the political conventions and codes that hold us in this space, because our humanity as dignified free beings is here, then if any political ban or any, any covenant that we're living in, and logic is a covenant, a code, a culture covenant, then the opening of a declaration is calling for the principle of separation, which is what all our great wisdom teachers say, separate from this to rise into the sacred space of being a human. So, just reading this with you, when in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bans, covenants, codes, which have connected them with one another, with another, it could be an external political arrangement, and to assume among the powers of the earth, the separate and equal station, to which the laws of nature, that's why I says double bracket, and of nature's God, double bracket, entitled them, a decent respect for the opinions and wisdom of humanity, the opinions of mankind requires them that they should declare the causes which impel them to separate, to separation. Deep separation from that, whatever it is, that's a great principle, that's an axiom. Resonating across the planet for centuries. We hold these truths to be self-evident, which is double bracket, that all humans are created equal.
It, it's interesting, you're talking about, here we're talking about separating, and I thought you were talking about unification.
We are, because separation from this is how we accomplish unification. Thank you, right, to separate from the separator is what brings us to think we're not the universe. Right, and that's what all the great wisdom teachers are saying, you gotta separate. So, we hold these truths to be this huge language of wisdom, or echoed, because he, Buddha is saying this, and Krishna, and Jesus, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men, humans are created equal, that they're endowed by their creator, there is a double bracket source, with certain unalienable rights, that among them, not all of them, but life, double bracket, liberty, freedom, and the pursuit of well-being, happiness. That's huge, that's a consensus of humanity. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, now we're bringing governments after those great axioms, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, we the people. Who are the we the people here? That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is a right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles, look at the top, the logos principles, and organizing these powers in such form, as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety, security, and happiness. Well-being, happiness is well-being. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light or transient causes. And accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing inferiority to the same object, evinces and design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and provide new guards for their future security. So when I read that, I was just stunned, I thought, wow, there's no mention of the British yet. This is a principle of humans who are dignified, well, created by the creator, right, and governments are instituted for that, to preserve that, and if they don't, it's a, it's a, it's a call out, and then goes off to live grievances against the monarchy, and then say, we here are separated. That's, that's a declaration of independence. So here's the point, if we can be truly become independent of the source of the smotherboard that is holding our culture and us, it's a regime, the dominance of this, all our great teachers are saying this, this regime of consciousness, of cultural making, self-making, it's abiding, and holding us away from rising. Right, Socrates is calling, Jesus is calling, right, Buddha is calling, yoga is calling. And my point is, even if our founding fathers weren't seeing it clearly, and we now in the twenty-first century can say, wow, check it out, and check out how this is the source of violence and objectification, think of the Holocaust, and genocides, and racism, and sexism, and the breakdown of our relationships of love, the divorces, and the objectifying of our children, and our kids in despair, nihilism, what's the meaning? Breakdowns of lives in midlife crises, all of that comes from this. We don't have that link, why? Because we don't have the unum to do it. You need the unum intelligence, the axiom, when you realize, wow, what is unum? The infinite is infinitely one, is all connected, we can't push it away, we're always surrounded by it, it's holding me right now, and I'm one of it, I'm, I'm in that point. Every point here is also a connected point, but we can't experience it, because we're dominated by a separator. And to declare independence of this would bring about interdependence of one another. So the flip side of independence is interdependence. So when I wrote the Declaration of Interdependence, it was an attempt to capture the deep logic and meaning and flow of the seventy seventy six, the twenty twelve. And this was circulated in a town meeting in Philadelphia. Citizens came out to silent on December twenty-second, twenty twelve. And we went down to the Constitution Hall and Mete Christ Church for meditation, and stood up in freezing cold, it was almost zero degrees that night, and I said to my friends in the freezing bit of cold, if George Washington could do Valley Forge, we could do this. Seriously, body cold, because this is the future of America. So I'm opening up your conversation, please help me understand, what do you see, what's going on, how can I help you? I'd love to do it for you.
I was thinking, in the state below the line of the state of separation, the re-underlying reality is, is there unity in every point of that separation as well?
That's right.
That's what enlightenment is.
Exactly, because when the Buddha realizes that there's no Buddha on the mountain, who is the Buddha? The Buddha is interconnected to the suffering, so the Buddha has to take on the suffering, and walk in the world, walk in the caves until all beings are liberated, and that's called the Bodhisattva, the compassionate Buddha, so that you can't, by the logic, you can't have a Buddha by the mountain, you, because the Buddha is interconnected, so in the Buddha language, this field is called the Buddha, the Dharma, the law, and the Sangha, the community, it's one word, Buddha, Dharma, Sangha. Right, and so, but the Buddha has, so the Christ has to take all the sins of the world. See the levers, go to the hungry feet, right, why? What's the sins of the world? The sins of the world is the dominance of this separator from, from God. And you gotta die to be God. So to separate, you gotta separate from this, let it go, which is a death, in order to, right? And so when you drop the single bracket, you're double bracket Christ, Buddha, oh, it's there already, but it's already here. And that's why it's said in scripture, the worst sinner can still be saved. Because everyone is surrounded by, by the infinite force, and, and everyone has a capacity to let it go. And that, that principle resonates, as you know, as well.
Did, was everybody able to hear that question? Do we need a microphone, or are you good with that, just to make sure you speak loud?
It would be good to use a microphone, because I'm making a recording here, you might as well notice the camera's on. My colleagues and students at Haverford said they couldn't come today, but could I could please make a recording so that they could, you know, share in the Wellington Revolution?
Question? So, in listening to you, it occurs to me that arguing beliefs, the points of view, uh, just push that button on there.
It seems to run out. Yeah, I had the trouble too, yeah.
Is, is pointless.
Good, good, did you follow that? Belief systems, what are belief predication stories? Because what I have been, what is a belief, it's a, I affirm that the door is closed, I believe I am hungry, I believe Jesus is my Lord, I have, I believe that Big Bang is true, I believe that, right, feminine voices think different. Whenever you believe, you're affirmed predications. And when Einstein says that problems generated at one level of consciousness cannot be solved at that level, it was brilliant, it means this is generating a polarity and fragmentation and degeneration and dysfunction. And our culture is facing it more accelerated now than ever. Because if we're a broken, a broken cluster of, of cultural colonies, and not one people, and we don't know how to be one, we, we the people which hold the power, give the power to government, then we're in an unsustainable cultural form. And the great teachers knew that, they knew that culture here is unsustainable, can we go on? And we're beginning to see the signs of one person saying, this is the law, the other side saying, no, it's not the law. These are the facts, well, these are the alternative facts. So beliefs, if you try to solve it here by, no, it's not Big Bang, it's Genesis, no, it's not pro-life, it's pro-choice, you're stuck, you gotta go dialogos. A deep dialogue, you can't dialogue here, you gotta go into the dialogos, right, in the open space, and that's when you can dialogue. This gentleman has, thank you for that. This is huge, you can't duke out the beliefs, yeah.
Yeah, it's part of a conversation we had at the break, which is, yes, we all accept that that is what's going on in our culture, that there is no dialogue between, you know, not just left and right politically, but also many other, you know, different specialty groups in our culture that really separate themselves from one another. But how do you create dialogue when it seems like we have no common language? And we seem to have no common, I would say, foundation upon which to start building that common language. I mean, I, I think that one of the hopes I always had that would make America work was that there is a common civic language, and a common cit, a common civic understanding, you know, that goes back to things like the Declaration of Independence, that transcends the fact that we are of different ethnicities, different religious groups, you know, different genders, different, all the other things that separates. But it, what I find so disturbing, and I feel like it's accelerating, and accelerating the disintegration of our country and culture, is that there is no common grounding upon which everybody can stand and say, all right, here's a starting point we can start trying to have dialogue from.
Beautiful question, did you follow? It's a great question, it's really the question for cultural sustenance at this point. Because I, I follow up on your question about belief systems, because to change a belief system, one of the, the wisdom teachers, here's one of the things I would say that my colleagues who don't appreciate who are the wisdom teachers, I've been the founder of the World Commission on Global Consciousness twenty years ago, Obergach, Jim Goodall, and many of the illuminated minds are on that World Commission on Global Consciousness, and it wasn't getting there, and then I joined with Urban Laszlo, one of the world-known world teachers, visionaries, he and I were co-chairs of the World Wisdom Council, right, again, a whole different, and we just hit the walls. I'm trying to say, we've gotta get, wisdom is not more here, wisdom is crossing. Wisdom is not information-based, wisdom is source-oriented, and yet we keep putting wisdom here. So if you're reading books by our bestseller, like, here's the power of now, bestselling author, but you don't even know this language, but, wow, that's good, the power of now, or, that's Return to Love, or, Asian Body, Temple's Mind, or Conversations with God, and all along we're getting bestsellers, and great books by genius, brilliant writers, but where we, we, we audience are reading the information here, and we're not getting into this common ground. So to change the story, we often hear about these wisdom teachers, and I'm questioning them myself, I'm saying, wisdom, if a wisdom teacher doesn't say to the audience, folks, the essence of wisdom is becoming aware of the mind-operated process that dominates our cultures, because our great wisdom elders have been calling it through the ages to upscript into the zone, why? And now we get to the common ground. What do I, if I'm pro-choice and I'm pro-life, if I'm Big Bang and you're Genesis, on one, what basis do we have to have a dialogue, all we have is monologue. Two monologues doth not a dialogue make, and in a way, if you say, what, what did Moses have on that stone? It should have been the eleventh one, is thou shalt dialogue, the ultimate command, thou shalt dialogue. Why? Because to dialogue is die of love. You know, that, and Jesus says, the ultimate law, love one another, that's the ultimate code. So what do we have in common, that's the point, we don't understand the unum. If we understood, and what I'm saying to my students, look, you're brilliant kids, bring my Haverford college, you're the best in the nation. Have you ever figured out that if the infinite, you can't, you can't not have the infinite, because if you try to draw a boundary around reality, you're already defeating yourself, because what's on the other side? It's bad bliss. So it's transfinite, therefore it's infinite, and it's infinite, it's infinite in every respect, and therefore it's infinitely one. And if it's infinitely one, you can't push it away, it's right here. That's a common factor, so, and furthermore, if it's infinite sourcing, the in, whatever name you use, then all of these names are gonna have to be interconnected deeply, which is a movie script I'm trying to bring out to demonstrate that. So if we got the unum, and how many, if I ask my students, how many of you understood that the infinite, and logic and science of the infinite, baby science, says it must be infinitely unified? Infinitely unified, what does that mean? It's a source of all possible words, it's a source of all possible narratives, ideologies, belief systems, worldview, scriptures? Wow, and if you get the unum, check it out now, if you, if you start to turn on the unum axiom, you realize, wow, what Jesus just said, when I was in prison, you visited me, and when I was hungry, you fed me, that's the unum law. I and Dharma are connected, whoa, when Buddha says, when you realize that everything is interconnected, and you can stand in the Buddha space, the Dharma, the law, you will have compassion, which is what? That you and the other are connected, you can't atomize yourself, you're woven into the other, oh, Buddha said it. When Krishna is teaching the own principle, the Gandhi principle, of compassionate love to Arjuna, what is, well, you see, he's tapping the always part of the unum force, the unum science. Big Bang, there was a big bang that started the universe. Biblical, let there be light. Oh, could it be that by the infinite mind just thinks, let there be light, Big Bang is got to happen? Yeah, so down here in the separation box, you can't find a common ground. And we keep duking it out to the tower battle, and the great teachers just get into the source. And if you can tap the source, why, it's something I do, because I like it, we have to. We hold these truths, you know, one nation under logos indivisible, that's having to be a language, one nation under logos, indivisible, why? Because you can't divide it. And that's where we learn, so, my response is, if you're gonna get an open valve for dialogue, and I've got a meditation, that I've, I have an institute, and I formed for this, called the Global Dialogue Institute, Steve referred to that, global dialogue, how do you dialogue across, how can you dialogue with a muscle? How can you dialogue with someone who is practicing Feng Shui or acupuncture? Can, if I'm an allopathic scientific doctor, can I take acupuncture seriously from Chinese medicine? You know, or want to be, how do I find a common ground? And, and the point I'm making is, when you realize, look, we're standing in the logo, when I realize that my narrative could not, not come from the same source that your narrative is coming, because of the unum principle. So the unum code begins to give us equipment and technology to decode how the logos is inscripted in every script. That's the answer. Pro-life and pro-choice, I believe that life is sacred and abortion is murder. But you know what, I'm pro-choice, you take away my choice, institutionally, you, you kill me, because I am freedom, I am my choice, you take away my freedom, you take away me. Let's talk about that, let's not put on bombs, right? And when you go deep into the logos, you see, if you imagine a dialogue between the pro-life and the pro-choice in front of the clinic, right, and then the pro-choice person is saying, you know what? The fetus has a choice, and to abort it, to abort that choice. So if I'm really pro-choice, not small C, but capital C, I will see that life is sacred. And vice versa, and the other person will say, I can see that if your rights to your own personal integrity, the separation and autonomy is being violated by some external force, I'm taking your life away. I'm sorry. Where'd you get that link? Well, obviously, they're all tapping, they're coming out of the same source. Once you know the unum axiom, it begins to open up amazing jumps, it could be worded differently. When Descartes said, I am, what am I, I don't know, he was experiencing an unum moment that Lord Krishna is teaching Arjuna how to om. Because when you om your I am, and you can be seen, begin to look at the narratives across history and say, wow, they're so uniquely beautiful and diverse, and yet you can see the resonance of the code, you got the code now. So the unum code allows you to unlock the connections that are laying there before our eyes where we couldn't see them clearly. And when we dialogue, dare to dialogue, we can begin to discover it. The Big Bang can discover the Genesis, wow, we're brothers. And the pro-life and pro-choice can say, wow, I see who you are. And you can lead to a healing of the nation, you know, across the board, I saw some other hands are up. Thank you for that question, I hope I addressed it in terms of finding the missing link.
I have a question about helping people get to that point, and is this, um, a developmental stage that, you know, people, that faith development, that you have to go through certain stages to be able to think in this broad, universal, um,
Global.
Holiness, and I, I, it makes a lot of sense to me, but I didn't get it at twenty-one. Um, I, I evolved to this point, and I've had some excellent teachers who have helped move me in that direction. I'm an educator also, and I wonder, how do you begin with children that use to help them move toward a universal thinking? Is that, can you, can you skip some stages?
That's a great question, did you follow? I just think, this is one of my favorite questions, because I'm a father of five, my eldest daughter is fifty-four, and my youngest is thirty-one, you know, and in my first marriage, I was a boy in college when I got my first child, and I didn't know what a father was, you know, and then afterward, I went through a divorce, right, because I wanted to be married, we couldn't cross, I wanted to be married, I gave my, my wife, what I call my fiancee, after several years, we had two daughters, a ring and said, would you marry me? Because I began to think about, I wanna get married, I wanna, I wanna join you in the eyes of God, right here, now, now to just get hitched, you know, but I wanna get connected, and it didn't work out so anyway. Second marriage, by then I'm beginning as a professor after years, to understand this sacred space. How do you raise a child from day one? Can you create a culture at home that holds a sacred dialogue space, and opens, you know, and, and to treat the child as a sacred being? Because they're already born as logosapien, this is a logosapien, this is an egosapien, homo sapien, sapien means wisdom. And the, the species of homo sapiens is the wise ones, but wisdom is not here, the egosapien is not yet the logosapien. Right, how do you raise a logosapien human? How do you teach these beautiful kids coming into college, after they're leaving home, and they're being steeped in all of this? Right, and, and, you know, is it too late to help them open up?
Especially if they haven't been in a home, that's how that's.
That's right, and I had to struggle in my second marriage, in my second ch, raising my second culture of families, no, I want to raise my children sacred, and I want them from day one, I want to listen to them, I want to, you know, treat them that way, and I created what I call family meeting, because I went to different churches, I was married in the Presbyterian church, my brother in Phoenix is a Presbyterian minister, and we follow, but I felt there was no Quaker, even the Quaker meeting, I went to Quaker meeting, and I didn't find the space that was ecumenical enough, global enough. So I created family meeting, you know, and every day, every Sunday we'd meet, and have music, and then, you know, and silence, and then start to read the Old Testament, the New Testament, the Koran, the Gita, right? And, and, and the children just listen and read, and then after a while, Dad, isn't what Jesus just saying also with Krishna and Buddha, isn't it? I said, yes, you know, and I helped them get, and they grew up in that. But then the flip side is, when they go to school, right, and they, they found it violent. The cliques and the behavior and the objectification, the bullying and all of that, they'd come home almost battered every day. And I have to sit with my son, who's now a captain for Alaska Air, and a great yoga teacher, right? I just sit with him at the fireplace in the living room, just quietly, because I know he got battered. And we just sit quietly, and after about fifteen minutes, he starts to smile, because he re-centered in the space, and he ran off and played. It took constant labor and work of love to hold a sacredness for a child, not to get crushed. And their peers went on from high school, their peers went on into the catacombs of the culture, and every units, you can see the difference, my other son, who's a brilliant yoga teacher, and awakening artist, and a, and a rock star, music from here, right? And my other daughter, who is getting her masters in therapy, clinical, she's five years in a clinical emergency hotline, helping people calling who are suicidal, and she could show up for people, and she's a coach to her friends, to teach them dialogue, because she sees all the constant violence and clashes, you know, and substance abuse, and all things going on here, right? How to be sacred. So, as an educator, I felt with these, you see, these brilliant kids at Haverford and Bernard over decades, to help them get into the lab, right? Your question, is it too late, if they've been steeped in this technology of thinking and everything predigating, to get to, you know, let's learn the language of the zone? So your point is, once you start, because it's teachable, the point is, logic is teachable, it's science, it's a source science. And these great teachers are tapping that science, and it's teachable, and if you can teach it, then you can accelerate it. So my, my, my son, for example, right, my other three children, would say, Dad, I'm a freak, I'm a freak in the culture. You know, I, I feel like such an idiot, walking in the, in the culture, and they had to become bi-cultural. You follow? But now they're passing it forward to their buddies and friends, and sisters and brothers, right? And you can say, wow, they're learning, right? And now my son's son, my grandson is coming through, and he's just spontaneously saying things, it's unbelievable. We had a big event in the Hilton at Sedona, I have a home in Sedona, my grandson, and we had a big kind of, this kind of meeting going on, we're passing the mic, and he came in, and he was sitting in the back, he's four years old, and he raised his hand, and they gave him the mic, and we're all very enlightened, and if, you know, he says, if, if you say you're enlightened, it means you're not enlightened, because if you're saying enlightened, it means you're speaking here, and you're not really understanding what, what enlightenment is. And then he said, look at the light, that bulb is a miracle, do you realize that light is, yeah, it goes on, I push a camera, a camera. You know, and his body, the kids, the younger ones are seeing, they're just stirring, you know. So if you can create a cultural space to incubate humans, right, and not put them into that space, and from day one, get, check the right box, get the right answer, you're gonna grade, you know, I think grading is degrading. I say to my students, grading is degrading, because I'm not gonna treat you as an object producing information, I'm treating you as a human, learning the literacy of being a human, that's what I want to coach. So the answer is, yeah, you can accelerate the learning process, and we have to do that now. Right, we can't go on another two hundred years this way. You've got to, and I have, I sense something amazing is stirring in the life of the people, not just kids. I feel people are simply angry, but they just need some coaching to see the difference between the smotherboard and the wisdom source.
Okay, we got one here, there, and then we'll.
Okay, Steve is keeping tabs, he'll come right back.
A question I have, I've read a little bit of your writings, and apparently, uh, probably just come up here. Seems to me that one of the things you were saying is what, that you were asking, what keeps spiritual activism not being very successful in the world over two thousand years?
Right.
Over twenty thousand.
That's right.
And I'm, I certainly can agree and understand everything that you're saying in terms of the zone and all of that, but if we think collectively, it would seem to me for people in general, cultures at large to get there, that they would have to commit to at least two principles. to get there, that they would have to commit to at least two principles, probably more, just talking offhand. One is the principle of dialogue. Then I would add the principle of non-violent dialogue.
Right.
And it seems to me that this proposes great hope. But it would require everybody to participate with the principles of dialogue and particularly non-violent dialogue. And as soon as people start moving up in that zone, other people in the lower zone are going to see them as very different.
Right, they will be.
And we will find ways to feel very threatened by people moving to that zone, to the point that they're willing to commit violence.
Right.
And many of the great wisdom teachers, of course, that's their history.
Right.
Christ was crucified. One of the people who was killed.
Gandhi was shot.
Gandhi. Ah, ah, ah. So I'm wondering, what's the role of violence in all this?
That's a great question. And I've been suggesting that, what I hear these great teachers, this is violence. Because what's the ultimate violence? To slash God, to slash the source. And slashing it means, "I've got my space and I've got my technology, my information." Right, and you don't realize that. But I didn't realize it, because we're good people. That I could be unintentionally divided and slashing. And that's what sin and samsara is, you're literally slashing. That's why you're single slashers for this technology, right? And it's violent. It's normal violence. Okay, extreme ISIS violence and Nazi violence and, you know, those forms are amplified versions of everyday, Monday, ongoing violent objectification of one another. It's, it's, Krishna already said, "It's no measure of health to be well-adjusted to a profoundly sick society." Right, and that's where we're conforming, because that's a norm, the norm we conform. And we bind, and we do it, and we just, and, and yet, the kids, you know, the kids are in such despair, you know. In turn, they're smoking, they're drinking, they're trying to medicate it because they know something is not right. So violence is not just stuff we do to each other only here. It is the pre-conscious adoption of a technology of self-making and culture-making and world-making that inherently slashes, polarizes, fragments, and that leads to the amplified versions of our diverse technologies analysis. So dialogue is the medicine, deep dialogue. That's what I was leading up to my incident. I wrote a meditation called "Seven Stages of Deep Dialogue." And I introduced that term twenty years ago, deep dialogue, to distinguish it from what people call dialogue here, which is like violent monologue. I'm, I'm in the Margaret Guest Center for Cross-Cultural Study and Revision at Haverford College. Margaret Guest had a vision and left her estate to the college in the form that's a building. And founders all of that have been in that building. I'm the Margaret Guest Professor. I'm pleased about that, because she stood for dialogue across the religions and worlds to celebrate diversity and explore unity. That's how she worded it in her will, right? And I saw that, so I've had all these great religious leaders in that room. Here's a Buddhist, here's a, here's a Confucian, and so forth, and African tribal modes of ethics. And they can't talk to one another. Then they're speaking, they're doing, "I have the Christ, and I know that you're not safe, you're, you're outside, and I'd love to show you the truth of Christ." And they're all speaking their truth, right? And they're not able to beat in the deep space. I, I was invited by the Partnership of Faith in New York City, a group of longs, you know, decades of work together, of these religious leaders, the top in New York City, meeting in the Partnership of Faith. And they asked me to lead them in the seven stages of deep dialogue. Stage one, it's a, most people don't get to stage one. They'd realize, "Oh, I'm G to the other. I've been seeing you my way, but I realize you're other." It's a recognition of the otherness of the other. "Wow, you're in a different world." That's why I say, "Men are from Mars and women from Venus." Because they're in different worlds and speaking from different lenses, right? So how do you have a, you know, interpersonal dialogue there? So the question you're raising is, to get dialogue by its nature, deep dialogue is non-violent. Stage one is, "Wow, the Lakota people are thinking differently. They have a different worldview." Stage two, "Do I dare enter? Do I dare give up and check my ego and the door to go into their world?" Stage three, "I make a choice, either yes or no. I'm going to run, I'm not going to do that, or I will." Stage three, immersion in the world of the other. And you're beginning to see, "Wow." Right, they, they, these, these people are turned on. They understand the buffalo, they understand nature, they understand the mountain and the land and the sacredness of nature. "Wow, I can learn from that." And it's, stage four, "I'm going to go back home, because that's not my home." And when you go back home, now you're in trouble, you're right. You follow, because, hey, this is another world. You follow? And then, stage five, stage six, seven, is when you mature now and sustaining the dialogue culture. So you're right, it's a, it, it is, again, the technology of dialogue. You can learn the skills of dialogue, that's what my institute does. And go through the seven stages. When students come to Haverford, they ask me, "Professor, could you have a seminar with us and lead us through the seven stages?" And I do, and these young freshmen, they could read through the, says, "I know this stage, I know this stage." And they get turned on. I said, "Don't throw that out, keep it for years and check it at the end when you graduate." And ask, "Have I been able to do dialogue at Haverford and Bernard?" Excuse me? So dialogue is deep, dialogos, right? And it's teachable, it's a skill, it's an art, being human. Being, being a human is an art, is the ultimate art. Right, and, and it requires the conscious I Am. When you I Am, you are owning your awareness with a field of awareness. Right, now you're in sync with the zone. And you're, you're becoming a mature human. So your, your question is well taken, you know, but, so violence, we don't realize. When you look at Gandhi and Martin Luther King and the season for non-violence. And I've had, you know, events at Haverford, the season for non-violence, with the grandson of Mahatma on stage. And I was pointing out that this is violent. And he says, "Yes." Slashing one another with our technology, good people. We aren't intending it, we're doing harm to nature, to the other, to other cultures, to ourselves, to our love, to our relationships, to our children. And you've got to, and so your point about can we enter dialogue non-violently? And dialogue, the I-Da is the place that you leave violence behind. And America has to grow up in that space. Gun control here is not going to do, is a users of the gun, that's a problem. If you, you, you need, you need the control of the technology of a culture-making that produces those conditions for the outburst of spontaneous violence. It's built into that culture. So we have a lot more to develop on that. Steve is orchestrating.
My question is about Descartes. What you said really puzzles me because having your basic standard brand, Western education, Cartesian logic, I felt like I got some familiarity with his...
It's coming through.
It's coming through, Steve. Okay, Descartes, Cartesian logic in my standard brand, Western education. I feel like I got at least an understanding of the language of Cartesian logic. Which my, what I learned was Descartes absolutely denied moving above that line. And this is something I've never heard before. Would you explain his language in describing his experiences above the line?
Excellent, thank you. It was great. It was a great confession that you were trained in Western thinking. But it's, it's astounding to me, one of the themes I had, and you brought up your point that what I'm trying to show, because I've been working with top activists on the planet for twenty years, and they're all saying, "Global warming, you know, climate change, let's do the equal..." And so, single bracket activism is not going to solve the, the source that blocks us from activision. And I'm trying to show when you have activision, you're changing the world from world, making the world here to be a non-violent, compassionate, awakened world, right? So that, to be an activist and sort of, I'm part of the evolutionary leaders of, it's a growing number of, now about eighty of the bestselling authors, you know, on the planet. And I was one of the initial founders with this, Deepak Chopra, Jim Kristin, Marian Williamson, Neelan Olav, oh, yeah, great person, right? And I get up and say, "They're going to go to five hotels in Washington, that they want to have a protest and to call attention." And I suggested that the, if Gandhi were here, what would Gandhi do, given the state of the nation? I said, "We need to have an ego strike." We need to call, and nobody's going to understand. An ego strike in the nation, in Washington, what does that mean? It's an educational moment to call attention to the people. And unless we recognize this motherboard that's controlling our lives and holding us captive, we're not going to cross into activism. Right, so it's a teachable point, but they, they didn't want to go there. And they continue to do activism here. And now they're, it's not holding together. All of these great activists that had so much hope, after a few years, they keep on trying to say, "Let's be act..." You know, and the Zen activists, you know the story. When the activist here is seeing the Zen person sitting here, I said, "Don't just sit there, do something." And the master replies, "Don't just do something, sit there." Meaning what? Not just sit passive, but just to hold that space. Every power point is such a power point connected that when you hold, if you can hold the power of where you are and be here now, you're reverberating the entire field. And that's how we go from ego pillars to butterfly eyes. Our journey as humans is to go from the ego pillar stage. Imagine, I'm making an analogy, the caterpillar. You say, "I'm going to stay a caterpillar." No, you're not, all right? You're going to go become a butterfly. So it's like that, we have to kind of wise up, right? In, in, in dialogue. So the Descartes point, when Descartes, if you follow his meditation, bring it right back to your point, excellent question. Scholars, after hearing Descartes, then ran here as predicated. But the ridiculousness of that, if you follow and honor Descartes, he saw every predication to be wrong, even two plus two equals four, excuse me. Even two plus two equals four. And he saw that, as long as he was in the space and thinking about it, the demon rules him. And how about self-deception? What is a demon within me that's deceiving me within to make it look true when it's always wrong? To trick me? And then he said, "I'm letting that go." That's when it's a divide, which Descartes, this Descartes or that Descartes? Then he said, "I am." And he realized, he went from a dual to a non-dual. Because there was no longer a space between his aming and his being and his thinking and his certainty. He tapped the dirt, he tapped, he tapped the foundation, was looking for the foundation. And he said it, he says, "This is new." If you look at, carefully at the text again, "This is new to me. I don't know what it means." He didn't know the language, he didn't have the code. He said, "What I am, I don't know, but that I am is certainty. Let me figure out what this means, so I don't confuse myself with something that I'm not." And he goes deeply and realizes in the next meditation, because he could cease to be, "Wow, the infinite being is here." For the I Am led to the I Da, the infinite Tao. And what, what do the interpreters do? They said, "The proof of God is not going to work." Because God, existence is not a predicate of God. You can't prove that God exists. That's ridiculous. If you read Descartes' third meditations brilliantly discovering within the I Am, he couldn't be without the infinite other. And then the, 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 the proof is not a proof here in predication, it's a source logos exploration. And people miss the power of his demonstration that you can't get around the infinite presence. It's great science he's doing. So the point is that, and then it took two hundred years for Edmund Husserl, the founder of phenomenology, in his first great book, Cartesian Meditations, to say, "When Descartes stepped out of the box, he opened a new lens." We didn't see that. And he opened phenomenology. He left the prejudices of this lens and entered into a witness, right? And that opened a whole new branch of philosophy called Witsight at Heidegger, right? Students of Husserl, right, had launched existentialism to get us out of the past. So I'd love to follow up with you, right? Because this is not unusual. But if you listen closely to Descartes, he says, "This is new. I didn't understand what thinking meant." So he was clearly in a new zone. But people say, "When he says, 'I am, I exist,' they thought he meant the ego was alternate." And it's in the ego that you find the ultimate truth, which is ridiculous. When you listen to all the great teachers saying, "The ego is an artificial construct that is not the true self." So there are two Descartes. The Descartes say, "I am," double bracket. And that's where the logic works, he defeats the demon. Or he says, "I am, I'm going back into the box." And the demon can't touch me, no, the demon's got you. Because the demon owns this place, because it can always deceive you. He didn't hit the foundation. And he couldn't prove that infinite being exists. And then he starts a whole, so it took us centuries to go back to the, we guess Descartes. I'll say the same thing for Jesus. If you put Jesus here, single bracket Jesus, and says, "He's my Lord," and God, put God here, then you discover a double bracket Jesus. That's the Lord. Double bracket Jesus is the Lord of all lords, the king of all the kings. And Buddha up here, and Krishna. All these great teachers, if you put them in the box, right? So I'm asking a question of the culture. Given after twenty-five hundred years of dominance of this, and we continue the habit of downloading the scriptures and the great teachers here, which is what happened to Descartes, we refuse to go out of the box to listen. So what is yoga? Every corner has a yoga studio, right? Well, yoga is the enter, letting go of this, that's the first axiom of yoga. Yoga, chitta, vritti, nirodha. Yoga is a quieting of predication. So that you can rise into the yoga. Right, but how many yoga studios are there? One? My son is teaching this, and he's showing, he's teaching the yoga of yoga. The yoga of yoga, to help people really get it. So there's a deep tendency to downscript the higher script. So if you say, "I got the Word of God," please reconsider it. Because the Word of God, the infinite Word cannot be accommodated in the finite box of objectified play. That's why you're going to warn him, "Don't write Tao here, don't write Yao here." And so where is Jesus? Here or here? He says, "I have the way, I have the script." Right, that's double bracket Jesus. And I'm asking, how many people are really seeing that followers of Jesus? Or Buddha, or Moses? Because if the covenant of Abraham and Moses is a covenant of the code, right? I mean, I mean, Abraham here, he was giving a rising, but he was here. Then maybe we're blowing Abraham. And that's why Jesus says, "If you understood Abraham and Moses, you'll understand me." Why? Because they're coding. They're honoring the code, the covenant. And then Muhammad comes along and says, "Jews and Christians, you're still not getting the covenant." And so he's trying to fulfill it. Why? Because if you miss the covenant, the code, then you block the whole deal. The code is not here, the code is here. This is huge. I'm sorry, I shouldn't go on.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. Yeah, I wanted to sort of question or comment is, I wonder if, we talked about what could be done to help us get from the lower level to the higher level? And I wanted to suggest, like, from my own experiences, that those things which really teaches empathy and compassion.
Yeah.
And it's only once we can really put, and put ourselves into another person's being that we can really begin to, to understand them. I, when I was five, my mother did something to kind of smack me up on the side of the head for something that I had done, and it's stayed with me ever since. And I think it's really, those kinds of experiences, you know, help us to move towards dialogue. Because if you can't experience, or try to experience what the other person is feeling, or, or even how they're, have some empathy to how they're coming to the conclusions that they are, I think the dialogue is impossible. Um, and I also wanted to, to say, I, I read last week of a very interesting project, and it might be in the Middle East, where Jewish, Christian, and Muslim kids are being brought together to read each other's scriptures.
Right.
And I thought that that was fascinating, is again, a way of really creating deep-level dialogue.
Right, that's called the oasis of peace in Israel. I was a TV host in Philadelphia for five, for three years, about a decade ago, Philly Live, and we came to Delaware, Philly Live, and then the Global Leds, and I had a show on that, of one Palestinian, one Israeli, and they have the oasis of peace in Israel, to have a camp, and to bring the kids to a summer camp in New England, to just not talk, but to break bread and have a campfire and kick the soccer ball. And begin with that behavioral visceral body level, to get empathy and sympathy, that they're human, right? Right, and get away from the talk dialogue to the invisible dialogue, and then body language. Right, and, and it was amazing results to have an oasis of peace in the middle of Israel that would bring them together to demonstrate that it's possible to break across those borders somehow. So that's a very important thing about empathy and sympathy. And hundreds and hundreds of cases, raising their children, you know, my wife's family's from Seattle, and we go there with the kids. Grandpa, Dr. Wilson, is sitting there, almost retired, reading his newspaper. And my son walks out and slams the door, it slams back, it has a spring. And I said, "Nothing, come here, please." Did you see that, that door slammed here for grandfather? Multiply that hundreds of times with a child, training them. Multiply that hundreds of times with a child, training them. To be sympathetic, to see the other. That's how you raise a sacred child, you know? So you're right. So the parents, parenting, the art of parenting, and educators and teachers with each other, lovers, really have to stand there patiently and hold that space of othering. You've got other, right? This motherboard smothers the other. But when the other, this is other, right? And you say, "Wow, now you can see, oh, grandfather, now." Or, "Look what I did here." Hundreds of times, and you begin to get awakened, you know? It's a living dialogue in raising a sacred child. And so we need to do that with each other in this country, you know? Hopefully, in the culture, in the civic space, to go from here, and violent, break down, polar, polarity, to here. If we want to make America great, which we all do, I think we have to make the crossing together. And I think that's what the founding visionaries are calling, the principle of separation. So that we can move into that space. I'd love to end, and if you say, Steve, maybe we could just sort of come up and read the Declaration of Interdependence, which I'm suggesting immediately flows from the Declaration of Independence. So you're calling the time, sir, and...
Yeah, you're right. Let me go back to your other, okay? You may regret that. You almost certainly regret it. In this one, I like your, I mean, I'm trying to get your framework in my mind. And I'm hoping you can give us other words for the double bracket.
Hold it closer, John, the microphone.
The double bracket, I don't think it's working. The double bracket in which everything, all this fits. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the word. The word that I need help with is, is there in this, I think of this as reality, some kind of...
That's right.
Okay, okay. And if that's right, I'm asking the question, does reality, your view of reality, does it have in it an eschatology, an inevitability about where it's all pushing?
Okay, so, you know, for years, imagine when I put the double brackets on the outside, that's a huge global truth, which is to say that once you begin to realize that the infinity is on the ground floor, then, and if the double brackets is the technology of the infinite flow word. It's not just a sign, you can't put the double bracket in here, right? Because students start, because they're so used to the literacy here, they will say, "Oh, Professor Gangi, I got the double brackets." Big mistake. You can't inscribe the double brackets here. The whole point of the double bracket is to say, "You can't stay here, you gotta cross into the I am and perform it and solve it," right? So once you realize that the unum, whatever name you use, it is infinitely unum, then it leads to this scientific theory, and all the great teachers do it, you can never step outside of the infinite sphere of reality. So if you call this God, what God is is own. Or if you call it Buddha nature, Buddha nature is infinite. If you call it om, oming all the way, right? So the double brackets is a demonstration that whatever narratives or identities you have here, it couldn't be without being sourced by the infinite force, which I call the LUW. The infinite force is always, it's the infinite force. It's not gravity, it's levity, right? So your question is, is it having an influence on the evolution of the American culture exactly? It sure is. Every, you know, so when Jesus dies and goes, is that gonna have repercussions to the same? Yeah. And what's the eschatology? That in the beginning, it's the infinite. Don't mess. It's not languageable. The LUW is tremendous, because nothing could be without it. And when we students begin to see, wow! If I'm saying, "I wish I could see a miracle," and then I reply, "No, seeing is a miracle." You have to see, don't you realize that every, just being alive? Being alive is an ultimate miracle. When you understand it, that it's being sourced from the fundamental field. So what you beautifully said is, what is reality? And when you say, "It's your view, my view," Buddha said, "The Buddhist truth is not a view. Feeling is going on here, I have a view, a worldview." When you go here, you're going beyond views, you're going into the zone, right? So if you're doing the source science and you realize, wow, whatever name you use for the infinite, that's reality. So you say, "The beginning is a word." Well, the word, the infinite word is reality. Which means what? Everything is wordy. Every word is coming out of the infinite word, right? Everything is wordy. That sounds strange, because when you use the word word here, well, a word is just a sign that describes something else. But when you use the word here, om is the word, or yaoi is the word, or Christ is the word. It's infinite, it's a field. Why? Because the unum connects everything. So the double brackets is, so if people can realize, and this is what education is, that you realize that just the fact wherever you are in this picture, you couldn't be without the source. The source is sourcing you in every breath. And if you can handle that, you'll be satori. You'll say, "Wow, how can I forget that?" That's understandable. And now you're crossing into that space from being in the box. So your point is well taken. Is eschatology is the narrative of end times and it's all going somewhere, right? So what's the eschatology for America? Okay, wherever we got the British...
For the universe, for the...
Yeah, I just, yeah, right, exactly. For this universe, right? But if you take an example, I'll say, the course of America. And we're not talking from a religious point of view, we're talking with deep source ontology, science. That the infinite force is moving every breath, every moment, you can't step outside of it. What does it do? It's called, "Free the slaves. Women can vote. Keep the union, right? Gays are human." Folks get it, you're getting, yeah, you're getting a behavior, but you haven't really gotten that to them, right? So it's forcing, not forcing in a proper way. The double bracket, America is calling out to America, script up. And the Declaration has been saying, whatever any form compromises your dignity, separate. So in a way, I think, when Martin Luther King says, "There's hope." "I may not get there with you, but we're gonna get there." That's eschatology, right? When we say humanity on this planet, we haven't gotten to Earth yet. We're living on this planet. How about this one, double bracket Earth? You know, we can discover a whole new planet, if you could enter Earth. So the eschatology is that, you know, so when people say, "Why are you so optimistic, given the obvious devastation's going on?" It's because the source got us surrounded. No single bracket force can stand up to it. The force is with you.
So we're all gonna get there.
The universe is gonna... Powerful, exactly, the universe.
How do you avoid getting a cup of Mlock as a reward?
Is that your question?
So the question is, is there a negative force? Is there spiritual warfare in the logos?
Beautiful. You got that?
Thank you.
Yeah, is there a negative force in the universe? Right, it's good versus evil. Lucifer. Where is Lucifer in this picture? Because Lucifer has a legend, a whore. Lucifer is this, and any thoughts called Mara.
My question is, is Lucifer in the logos?
I know, I'm with you, right? So one of the questions posed to the biblical tradition is called, "God is evil." If God is created, and God has infinite power, and there's evil in the world, then God is evil. That's how it goes. The comeback was evil is generated by a disgrace, a breaking of a law, a breach of it. That in this case caused the fall, the fallout of Adam and Eve, eating the fruit. What fruit? The fruit of this stuff here, the tree of knowledge, not the tree of wisdom. And by falling and creating this line, which is a wound in the heart of God. Your point is right. The evil hurts, the cut in the heart of Lucifer is breaking away, right? And creating a force. Your point is, yes, there is. The evil in the world is, that's why the Buddha has to tend to the evil. The Buddha has to tend to, you know, it's not, there's no dualism here, but there's not dualism between this and this. So the evil festering on the planet, which comes from what? From the willful disregard of the call of the source. So it's a human will, that's what the fall is trying to say. It's attached to this technology. Despite the great teachers, we keep doing it. And Buddha said, "We have a choice. We don't have to do that, we can do this." So my answer is yes.
My one follow-up is...
But it's not more powerful than the good.
Right.
This is the good, the infinite good, and evil is a fallaway.
Is there also an evil concept in the other religions, where there isn't Christianity?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not aware of that.
It's called Mara, Mara. We hear Buddha saying, that when you can really enter this place, Mara can't touch you anymore. And samsara, so the condition of spadiation is where the evil force continues here. And the good force comes in to lift you out of that darkness and evil and violence into the place of love, right? So yeah, across the board, Buddha has it, and his, even though it does have God, right? There are evil forces of ignorance. And so you begin to see that evil is ignorance. What is ignorance? Unwittingly holding on to processes and smotherboards and practices that cuts us off from our source. And the law, the logos, the law, you know, the call of the law is loving with all your God. That's ontology. It doesn't have to be a God's vanity. It's that all beings need to rise to understand the signs that the source is here and funding every breath. That's to put first things first. And if we don't, then we're gonna desource. If you desource, we're gonna fall apart. If you fall apart, it's unsustainable, and we're gonna be where we are. Broken relationships, broken families, broken cultures, broken democracies, babble. And we can't enter into dialogue. So yes, the answer is, all crosses resonates, you know, in Chinese thought of God. Not the yin and yang, it's not evil, but there's gonna be an evil force, the good and the evil.
Well, a quick comment.
Do you have the microphone?
It currently that another way of looking at that, when you was talking about a force of evil, is just up in the...
Double bracket.
In the double bracket is wholeness. And that...
And love.
And love is whole. But when you split into opposites, so that when, you know, I mean, I'm using sort of union terms here about a collective, the archetypes that are whole, and when they're brought into consciousness, they split to opposites, so that evil and good are opposites. And if we just think of the double brackets, the source as perfect good and not perfect wholeness, then we are still in a dual...
Thank you. Good? That's right. That's right. So that's why you can't objectify the infinite, because it is whole. It's a whole, and your point, it's all of reality. So you have to, the logic says, "God is the world, God is reality." The field, ontology, I wonder what's real? What's real? The infinite force. And Einstein, during the science, he wanted the unified field, but all his life he couldn't get there, right? He couldn't find the unified quantum light, it's way more particle, either, or, right? Brilliant, you got spacetime continuum, but he didn't go all the way to get the, ah, that's the unified field. That's a cosmos, the infinite cosmos. And Hawking's and others are trying to get into black holes, non-locality, the butterfly effect. Physics is onto something, to see that the most distant spaces in the universe are instantly connected right now. Superluminary, beyond the speed of light. That was unthinkable here, right? Why is that? Because of double bracket interconnectivity of every point, right? The visible past is showing up now, and you can't separate from now in this logic here, right? So you can't separate, when Spinoza said that the infinite is infinite spirit, but it's also infinite energy and matter, they stole him out of town. Don't you see that God is matter? Infinite matter, sacred matter. Why? Because every word here has to go to the infinite. And the question here, how about evil? Is there infinite evil? No. Evil is a fall and disgrace, an abuse of the will, and a misuse of choice and agency. So creating Adam and Eve with freedom, and saying, "I ask you one thing, do good ontology, honor the first." And they don't have, let's do that. Let's do that, eat the fruit. And you eat that fruit, you fell, an eclipse, it's gonna be a dismal ingenuity to get us back. And that's what Jesus is about, the bridge of the incarnation of the word here, to sacrifice so that we can cross back. And that's the eschatology issue happening. So the eschatology in the ecumenical sense, not just in the Christian sense of end days, right? Is, do we have, my kids come to Dad, things are bad. The great teachers are saying, you know, bodhisattvas can bliss in the midst of this. And he's saying, "How can I bliss in the midst of this?" And I say, "Then how can you not bliss in the midst of this?" Why did I say such a thing? Because, you know, because the double brackets got you. If you're one with the source, if you're standing with the source, you got him surrounded. And if you don't know that, then you're gonna cave in. And the question is, if you think evil can dominate the good, then the lights are gonna go out for us. But if you know, unshakably, as bad as it looks, good over evil, infinite over the finite. Because a finite couldn't make itself infinite. So the evil is the violation and the breaking of the force. And why did that happen? Ill will, bad will, incompetent will. And that's Adam and Eve, that story. And in the East, it is the persistence, after Buddha would teach and yoga would teach, that of us continuing to use the motherboard, even despite their teaching that it's not good. It's a motherboard, but we continue, that we're held culpable for that. We're culpable because it's been 2,500 years of the teaching, you know? And you say, "You have a choice. You don't have to do that addiction, the egomental thing."
We'll take one more, and then we'll move to the back of the panel. Is that what you want to hear?
Yeah, let's do that, if you don't mind.
One more question.
Last weekend, I heard a speaker, Quakers, say, "Any exchange void of love is an act of violence."
Yes, every exchange made void of love is an act of violence. Meaning by that, if you choose to speak here, you're using a violent technology, whether you realize it or not. But when you're here, this is the Valentine's, now, think of a new Valentine's year. Valentine's is for your lover, don't slash her or hit whoever it may be, right? Enter into the, don't objectify one another. So to speak love and to be love, and Jesus said, "God is love," right? And Jesus sing the law of love, love one another. It means to zone it, you gotta zone it, right? And so the Quakers who knew it is that of God and every person. And what's the autocode? Speak from that, right? Live from that. So when you speak from love and deep dialogue, you're honoring one another. That's the autocode. The autocode can't be upheld here, because it's inheriting disrespecting the other and yourself, right? You fall...
So one more question.
I just, I have a sense that one of the parts of the bottom is that we have to go through suffering, right? And the goal of listening to you talk about, we need to go through suffering. And that creates the empathy and the ability to listen to the other that enables us to make that leap upward. Otherwise, we're caught in our, you know, wired in our own needs, wants, interests. But it is that growth of immaturation through suffering that enables us to make that kind of leap.
Wow, that's a great question. Did you hear it, follow it? In terms of, must we suffer to go here, right? And the two kinds of suffering. Buddha saw that the human condition, sleeping on the job, is suffering with normal life. Because to be cut off from the light is to be in a kind of darkness, of a cave of sorbetes, which we don't really have ultimate meaning. We don't have ultimate, you're having to be in midlife crisis. When your worldview collapses on you, that's midlife crisis. This is all imploding on you, and you're saying, you know? And you might say, one way of saying it, until you implode, say you're an alcoholic and you're denying it, and finally you bottom out, so that's it. Let me go to the AA meeting and declare, "I'm an alcoholic, and I need help, right? I suffer, and I've done a lot of damage, but now I'm ready to twelve-step it." And I rewrote the twelve steps, not here, but as a journey to here, to overcome addiction. The source of addiction is ultimate addiction to the motherboard that we don't even know that's causing all kinds of substance abuse, including making ourselves into substances, right? Which is inherently a self-funition. So, but the other kind of suffering... So the other kind of suffering, the two phases to suffering, one is just ignorance immersed in a cave-like existence of slavery to smother gene, and not coming into the light, and that's a suffering. The other one is the person who starts to let go of that, and say, my work, my life is not working, something is wrong, right? I've got to let go. It's a deep suffering to cross, because you've got to die, you've got to let go of your story. And that's, the bungee jump into source is like a whoa, you follow? That's scary. My son saying, Dad, I'm at the edge, this is scary. This is scary to let go of my familiar self, the boy that, not Peter Pan. I said, you have to go to Peter Pan to Peter Man. And he said, do I have to give up the joy and the bliss and the enchantment of being a boy free in the world? I said, check out the bliss you're going to feel when you cross into manhood, let Peter Pan be a Peter Man, right? He's worried, he's going to lose it all, and you follow? To let go of your familiar. So that's, but here's a third way of looking at it. Why did Adam and Eve, for humanity, when they were in paradise and everything was cool, do what they did to go into temptation and eat the fruit of the object and fall into disgrace? And agenda for humanity knows is, how do we find our way back? Follow? And that story is, in a way, it's a blessing, because if you just have naive, unawakened consciousness, you're not going to know. When you go in exile and fall, and you suffer from distance and exile, and homelessness, and homelessness, now you're going to have to earn your way into awakened life, and that's the joy of being a human, to be awakened, not just to be sleep on the job in bliss, but to be mindful and aware and enlightened. So the journey of enlightenment goes into a fall, an alienation, samsara, until you're ready to rise. Does that answer? Yes, you got it?
Do you want to move into your folks?
Well, yes, you know, I thought that maybe if some, could someone who's a good reader just read the Declaration, take the mic and read the Declaration of Interdependence, just as something to think about. Thank you. Would you take the mic?
I have to.
Yes, you do. Why don't you come up here?
I can read, even with a cold.
Yeah. No, I'll take a seat.
A global declaration of interdependence. In the course of events, as our ongoing evolutionary drama unfolds, it has become clear that we the people have entered an unprecedented global age. With the intensified encounters and growing awareness of the living realities of our diverse cultures, worldviews, religions, ideologies, and diverse forms of life on a planetary scale and in the marketplace of our global village, we are able to open ourselves as never before and listen deeply to our other and tap the enormous endowment of our global wisdom through the ages. It is clearer now that our diverse wisdom and spiritual traditions concur that the heart of our human reason is global, ecumenical, and lights up beyond our local ideologies and dogmas. It is clearer now in our evolving global age that this global light of reason is the funding source of our diverse cultures, worldviews, and forms of life, and is the original source of our diverse global self-evident truths. Further, in this global rite of reason, it is self-evident that we humans co-originate from a common source, which is the ground of our individual dignity, the sanctity of our personal space, and our inalienable right to life, freedom, and well-being. And in the course of evolutionary course of events, and in the evolutionary course of events, it has become unmistakably clear that when we humans are lodged or entrenched in monocentric or egomental patterns of self-making and culture-making, this level of literacy and development produces fragmentation, polarization, alienation, dehumanization, and boundless forms of personal and cultural dysfunctions. Our personal, cultural, and ecological crises trace to such mental practices. In this light, it is self-evident that when we humans mature beyond this monocentric I-it pattern of life to a more evolved, deologic, I-thou form of life, literacy and making, we shift from monologue to dialogue, from I-it to I-thou ethos, which lifts us to our higher human form and open sacred space for we the people. Furthermore, it is now evident in the global light that our entrance into our evolved global age urgently calls on us individually and collectively to declare our independence from all personal, interpersonal, and cultural patterns of self-governance that eclipse, suppress, repress, compromise, or violate our sacred right to life, dignity, freedom, well-being at the personal and collective sanctified spaces. Finally, the ecumenical light of reason teaches that diversity and unity is sacred, and that all persons are equal across gender, ethnic, racial, religious, ideological, political, economic, and generational lines, and as such, are entitled to the highest degree of life, freedom, and well-being. Accordingly, we the people, rising now together into our global age beyond all artificial borders, leaving behind personal and collective dysfunctions, now acknowledge and affirm that our democracy is ecumenical and global in origin, scope, and power, beyond ideology, dogma, and egomental patterns of life. We hereby recognize that we humans are and always have been intricately interwoven together in the fabric of life, in the dialogic I-thou commons of personal and civic space, interdependent with each other, with all life, and with sacred nature and earth. Thus, in light of the above and in the presence of the light of global reason, we hereby acknowledge and declare our sacred interdependence, and hereby resolve to do all in our power and with highest urgency, to collaborate across all borders, to co-create mindfully, nurture and bring forth our more evolved shared form of life, wherein our planetary human family may flourish together, individually and collectively, with our sacred earth.
You're brilliant.
And that's right, the point is...
You're very good.
I can imagine that.
Thanks for your help, John, for...
What? It was, it was psychology. Well, thank you very much. I wrote that, I said, sitting in Christchurch on George Washington's bench and reading and studying, and letting the words of the 1776 perk through me, and listening to where we are now, and this came out as a meditation. It's been circulated around the world, people in Philadelphia signed it, it was part of this live streaming in 2012, in 2012, and then we came to Philadelphia, there was up in Connecticut, there was a group of people at a place that was once affiliated with the UN, bringing it to the United Nations, too, that this was performed live for the World Streaming Event. So we just thought that was a good place to end this time meeting. Your questions are great, and you really are, you know, in terms of my PhDs, brilliant students, this is a great place, and you really are engaged in great questions, I thank you very much. Thank you.